I want to call the order, the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for September the 25th, 2023. We'll ask that each individual please stand for the prayer and pledge allegiance presented this morning by Commissioner Trey Gooch. Commissioner?
Let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh, Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. Father, we ask you, and thank you for this and another day where we can meet here in this manner, as that you give us a servant's heart. And, Father, we know that government meeting in this capacity reflects the liberties and the freedoms that you have expressed to us in our Constitution and our Bill of Rights. And so we ask that we will guard these freedoms, these liberties and our rights with every fiber of our being. As always, Father, we ask that you put a hedge of protection around our first responders, our law enforcement and our military, both here and abroad. And we ask these in all things through Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now have the roll call and termination of quorum.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. We'll now go through the approval of our minutes, and I'll ask our Vice Chairman, Lee Bogle, to take care of that.
There are no minutes to approve at this time.
No minutes approved at this time. We'll move now into the public comment period. We did not receive any phone calls for anyone to speak at this time, so we'll now move into items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Damasi?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. No items have been withdrawn nor deferred off this agenda.
Right, sir. Thank you. Moving now into our new business. Item A, waiver request, item one from that column. John Williamson, 23, 4003, is requesting a waiver to the 50-foot minimum width for a private asset easement for property located off Sheldman Drive. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. The applicant purchased this property several years ago. There's a right-of-way easement that was secured through property directly north of the subject track, which, as Mr. Reed stated just a moment ago, has access to Sheldman Drive. This access easement was only 25 feet in width. Our county subdivision regulations do require a 50-foot easement for landlocked tracks. The applicant has attempted to secure some additional width for the easement, but the property owner of the adjacent track where the 25-foot easement is wasn't willing to provide any additional area. So they're asking for a waiver to the 50-foot minimum. I believe what they were going by, if it's a court-ordered easement, it's 25 feet is the maximum they can grant. But our regulations, of course, require 50, so I think that's kind of what they were going by. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. This would be the only tract of land that this would have access to. The applicant and their representative is present if there's any questions.
Messers, questions, comments? Mr. P.
What's the intention with this property? And what can you do with a 40-foot easement?
You mean 50? 50-foot easement?
They currently have 40, correct?
25.
25.
Yes. It's really, it's just for driveway purposes. I mean, the property's owned residentially. Obviously, if they can find a soil site or something back there, they could build a house. But, I mean, as far as any kind of development or tracks or anything, I mean, I think you're looking at pretty much what you see is what you get, kind of a thing.
I mean, do they intend to put several houses back there?
No.
One home, two homes?
No. I think it's just access, just to get something back there. Like I said, the applicant is present if you want to speak more to his plans, but they have not spoken to me about any kind of division of the property or anything beyond just having the access easement widened a little bit.
Doug, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I don't, maybe I'm not looking at the right place, but I don't see where this access easement is.
It's not shown on the survey. There was a D that went along with it. I just included the survey on it. But it would basically go from, you know, that 25 feet off of, like I said, that'd be Lot 90 up to Sheldman Drive is what you'd be looking at.
And that is already recorded on the easement somewhere?
That's already been done. Yes, sir.
The next question is, is 25-foot enough to allow electrical easement? I think, thinking that the power company requires 40.
Most of the time, they would. Now, any kind of an easement that would have to be secured through the utilities, they would have to take care of. Now, this is something, this is just for access, so...
This won't be the end of their...
It wouldn't be. If they had to get utilities, correct.
They still may not make it.
If they have to get utilities and things back there, they'll have to work through utility companies for that.
Yeah, I couldn't hardly tell by the information we had. I'd like to see, is there a house on, is there a driveway on where he's trying to get through, or is he coming off of a side road to get into that? I couldn't hardly tell by that drawing, because if there's already a house and he's trying to come down somebody's existing driveway, he'd get out like a little bit by there.
Let's go ahead and ask for the applicant, if we could, to come forward, and I think I might answer some of your questions. Come forward, identify yourself, and come to this side.
I'm Charlie Montgomery, and I'm here with Mr. John Williams. He's the owner of the property. When he was approaching me about what he was wanting to do, we found out even with a 25-foot easement, you can't even build a barn, get a building permit to build a barn or a shed or anything like that, from what we found out. So he's, if on down the road, if he decides to put horses on it or whatever, there's no way of putting a barn or shelter, because you couldn't get a building permit just with the 25-foot, or if he wanted to build a house, if he was able to get soil. It's, I don't know if, well, we actually talked to Randy about it, and they wasn't, he didn't think you could get a soil site on it to build a residential structure without going through some alternative systems. But like we were saying in the beginning, the way it is right now, he couldn't even build a barn to get a permit to do that. So that's why we're asking to get the waiver to do a 50-foot, where he can make an application to build a barn on down the road if he should decide to, or 10 years from now, if a person wants to go through the hassle, get, trying to get a soil site, then they could build a house. But realizing that 25-foot wouldn't even allow you to get any type of a building.
Just a quick question, quick follow-up. Mr. Montgomery, this piece of property is just for personal use? He's not going to subdivide it and build multiple houses on it? Just his own property?
That's what his plans are now, yes. I mean, not to say he might sell it on down the road, but there's no plans of doing any subdivision. I don't see really how you could subdivide it.
What would be the access point? Could you show us up there where the access point, where we're giving 25-foot or requesting the 25 feet to go in?
Where you said, Douglas? Yeah, right, along this Lot 90. So it's set at 25 right now, and they're wanting 50, I guess, or...
The requirement is 50. They're asking to keep it at 25, is what they're asking for. Yeah, that's fine.
But it's, the USDA soils map says it's all glatful rock, and the likelihood of finding a soil site is not impossible, but doesn't look good.
And getting back to the question about, you know, multiple lots, I mean, considering the fact that, you know, like Mike said, the likelihood of finding multiple soil sites back in that area, let alone one, might be difficult. If they were to try to do additional tracks back here, they would have to come back through us. And I mean, quite frankly, I don't know if we'd be supportive of that, because then they'd be having to look at tracks that are less than five acres. Those, if this is approved, it'd be less than a 25-foot easement. There'd be several waivers involved at that point.
The subdivision you see at the northwest corner is Madison Square, and its soil site is way, way to the north, septic step system, I'm sorry.
Couple of questions for me, because I've been, I guess I've been exposed to a similar request back on a piece of property I bought, and we, I'm hearing about the question about a barn. I'm not clear yet on the 25 feet, where we have the right-of-way to come in and make a turn to get in there. Okay, that's it right there. We'd come in beside that house with a gravel road, I'm assuming, to get access. So he wouldn't have much of a turning radius if he's coming in. Is that, is that what we're kind of looking like?
Right. There is a long-term temporary cul-de-sac that we made him put in with Madison Square. But yeah, it looks like his driveway would come right along this edge.
Okay, and then the other question I got, Doug, as far as temporary, when I was living in Georgia, tempted to come home, I was going to put me up a barn, and I couldn't put a barn up, because I didn't have permit to build a dwelling, a residential dwelling. Would this fall in under an agriculture piece of barn, and is that, would that be acceptable? But I hate for him to get something approved, and then he couldn't use it, run into a different issue.
If it's being used for agricultural purposes, that's fine. Now, something that he would have to get special approval for, if he wanted to build like a barn for just personal storage or something like that, that would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for accessory structure, before the principal structure on the property, but that doesn't count for agricultural structures.
Just want to make sure you understood that, because I couldn't, I couldn't build mine until the house was on the property. I guess I'm questioning why we're even here on this. If he has a right to put a gravel driveway in agriculture deal, what are we doing even having this?
Well, the issue that we ran into was, again, for private easements, we require 50-foot. They were able to secure a 25-foot, and that's when Mr. Montgomery came into my office and said, "Well, what do we do here?" I said, "Well, your only other option, you've got two. You can try to see if you can secure an extra 25 feet, or you can ask to see if there's a waiver available, you know, if the planning commission is willing to grant a waiver." So they did try to approach the property owner of that tract and say, "Hey, could we have an additional 25 feet?" And the property owner wasn't willing to do that. So that's why they, this was, you know, they did try. This was their kind of last resort at that point.
So did he, Mr. Williamson, did he buy this land locked already? Did you buy the land and it was landlocked already without an easement at all?
Bought it in 2001.
2001, yeah. But it was landlocked then?
Now, access, and I'll just say, access, there has to be access to all tracks of land. Now, if the property owner cannot come to an agreement with some of the surrounding tracks, property owners of the surrounding tracks, then they can take it to court, and the court can mandate. And the court can mandate, I believe, up to 25 feet. They don't mandate more than that. That's what they're bound by. So I think that's what Charlie and them were going by when they did it. It's like, oh, well, if the court would have done it, it'd been 25 feet, we'll just leave it at that. However, that's when Charlie came to me and said, "Well, actually, it's 50 feet if it's, you know, not a court-ordered situation."
Doug, let me just see if I can make this really simple. The guy wants to put a driveway so he can get to his property.
Correct.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve in a second.
I still, I, Jim, a question, though. If he just wants a driveway to his property, he can do that on 25 feet. Why do we have to have the...
Our requirement for the county is 50. I mean, that's the county requirement. That's why they're asking for this.
We're making that exclusion.
And this waiver would allow you to get a building permit for a barn?
All right. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved. Item B, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Number one, McGowan Subdivision, 23, 1006, five lots on 13.68 acres, zoned RL, located along Cana Drive. Dan France is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to extend Cana Drive into a cul-de-sac and add a total of four new building lots. There is a fifth tract on there, which you'll see. That area is going to be combined as part of Lot 1E, which contains an existing house that already has access to Keynesville Pike. The four building lots are all flag lots. They do have the minimum required frontage along that cul-de-sac extension. Most of our comments have been addressed. We did want them to put a comment onto the plan, just stating that all the cross-access easement wasn't going to be for all these lots, A, B, C, and D, and they would all share a common drive. With that, though, the rest of our comments appear to have been addressed. This appears to be in good order, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Messers, comments, questions?
I thought we were trying to get away from the flag lots.
Well, the regulations, I mean, you're right. We are looking into that, but the regulations we have are still in effect, so what they're proposing is allowed under our current regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. Subject, any staff comments?
Motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Secretary, let's have a roll call.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
No.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. Moving into item two. Ashmore Subdivision, 23, 107, 07, 63 lots, 60 residential lots on 37.14 acres, zoned RM, located along Franklin Road, SR 96, 8651 Franklin Development LLC is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to create this subdivision at the intersection of Franklin Road and State Route 96, or Franklin Road slash State Route 96 and Coleman Hill Road. The lots are a minimum of 15,000 square feet, and sewer service will be via a step system. You see, there are access points onto Franklin Road as well as to Coleman Hill. Right-of-way dedication is being shown along Franklin Road. We don't know exactly what the design for a five-lane is going to look like yet, but they are dedicating enough, so it's 50 feet off-center, so that should be sufficient. Of course, the state needs more. They would have to take care of that. Our understanding is that this project is currently under design by TDOT. Again, we'll just have to kind of wait and see what comes up with that. We did have some additional question about the traffic study that was done for this. As you can see, they're not proposing turn lanes on this. The applicant's design engineers here can speak more to that. There was also some discussion during our pre-application meeting along the eastern boundary regarding a buffer. There's like a little private drive, Joseph Lane, right there. They did talk about some kind of a buffer slash screen. It's not anything that's required, but they did discuss that. I asked them to be prepared to discuss that in a little more detail. As of right now, they hadn't given us much detail on that. Most of our comments have been addressed. There is a note that needs to be added to the preliminary plan, just as one of our standard notes, but that's pretty straightforward. So beyond that, again, the applicant is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, could you explain the turn lanes again? We approved it without turn lanes back in '21?
No, this has never been brought for consideration before. So as of right now, we did ask them about the traffic study. We show that, we see that they're not proposing any, and we just told them that they needed to be prepared to discuss that at the planning commission, meaning that it's a 60-lot subdivision. I'll let them discuss their traffic study when they make their comments.
I think that's critical on this topic, based on Coleman Hill Road right there. I go through there all the time. It's probably one of the most dangerous places to pull out right now, so we need to talk about this.
Do we need to see the... Yep. Messers? I'll ask that the applicant come forward, or their representative.
Good morning, Chairman Reed, members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We did prepare a traffic study for this project. In general, the traffic's pretty low for 60, you have 60 lots. It doesn't generate a lot of traffic, especially since we were able to split our traffic. We're proposing a main access at Puckett Road, and then another access on Coleman Hill Road. We are saying in the traffic study that you do need to provide left turn, separate left-turn lanes out of this development. However, left-turn lanes or right-turn lanes into the development are not warranted. We show in the morning at, off of Franklin Road into our main access, we have two vehicles turning left into the site for the entire AM peak hour. In the PM peak hour on Franklin Road, we have five vehicles turning left into the site for the entire PM peak hour. Now, keep in mind, as you know, Franklin Road is a state highway, so we will be having to get permits from TDOT to construct this access. They're like, they may want us to look at that left-turn lane situation again, but don't feel that it'll be warranted by them either. If they do decide we need it, we will definitely put it in. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Bill, this is for you and Mike. On a state route like this, as an example, you've done a traffic study for your 60 lots, and then will TDOT do their own traffic study? Is that common, or do they just take the one that's currently done and review it and put a stamp on it?
Well, they require, anything that generates 50 lots or more on a state route requires a traffic study, so this would have triggered that. But they will not do their own, they will evaluate this one.
Okay. Thank you.
I will point out that we also, when we counted existing traffic, we grew that existing traffic for three years, because that's how long we think it'll take to build our houses in that development. Also, staff said, "Bill, you need to look at the Dell Webb development that's going on a little bit down, down the road towards town. Add traffic in there for that," and we did.
Yeah, I asked Bill to factor in the Dell Webb Southern Harmony development, because it's, you know, substantial.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I was going to ask him on that peak hour study. You say you got two cars coming in on Coleman Hill Road?
Notice, we have five in the morning on Coleman, Coleman Hill Road turning left. We have two going into our main access in the AM peak hour. We have 12 of our vehicles in the PM turning left on Coleman Hill Road, and five turning in our main access there, which we did line up with Puckett Road.
What about coming out going left?
Coming out going left at Coleman Hill.
At Coleman Road, yeah, because that's where they back up.
Right. We have nine vehicles in the morning for our project going out, and six in the PM going out at Coleman Hill Road, so small numbers there.
Other questions? Mr. P.
Now, I'm sure you've said this, but this is before this is built, or are you added...
No, I've added our traffic onto the existing traffic. I've grown the existing traffic based on percentage in, for three years, and I've also added Dell Webb traffic in there also. So I'm evaluating it for total traffic.
That's, that's something we ask him to do, is look at what the traffic is right now, what it is growing within a timeframe. We agreed on three years without this development, and then how it would look three years with this development, and how is it evaluated? So this is one of those right-on-the-edge kind of thing for me. You know, Coleman Hill does have access all the way to the south, but I, you know, we have to look at the development potential of the land around it. Excuse me. And there is soil a little bit to the west, but once you go out a little bit farther from that, there's not much of any suitable soil past a little bit west of Coleman Hill. And I'll try to zoom out without my computer crashing. So even all the way down to the south, Newman Road and Coleman Hill goes this way out to Windrow Road, we run out of good soil. And you look at, well, is it going to develop in the immediate vicinity of this? Will this cause additional traffic issues? So I didn't see much development potential to the south without, you know, much suitable soil. There is, like I said, a little bit to the west on Coleman Hill, if it were ever to develop. But, you know, with, with Bill evaluating the Dell Webb, excuse me, property, and the turning movements of what's there now and what's projected in three years with this development, they, it didn't warrant turn lanes, but, you know, it's, it's right on the edge. If we don't get a turn lane now, you know, that's, that's where I kind of stand. I'm, I'm still, you know, crunching through the numbers, but it's, it's one of those right-on-the-edge kind of things.
Well, you know, looking at it, and it's one of the things I think would be wise to work with the state. You can tell they're going to work that highway over right there with Dell Webb going in. It, to me, this is where planning comes in. Doesn't make sense to throw a requirement on the turning lane, only to have the state come to that and redo the whole thing. But somehow or another, we do need some type of wording in here that says, "We're going to address this," and I think I heard Bill say they will address it at the time. But something needs to be in here that has some teeth on it. Doesn't make sense to build it now, and only find out the state wants to do it a different way within the next 12 months. That's the part that, that's the only piece for me.
That's, that's what I've reached out to the state to get a little bit firmer timeframe, and I have yet to hear back from when they think that section of 96. 96 is being widened right now in Williamson County, working this way, but, you know, we don't know when this section will be evaluated. So a little bit farther down on your agenda, you'll see Last Castes Estates. It's approximately the same size development, 62 lots. They were required to put two turn lanes in, and you have left turn lanes on 96, Last Castes Pike, so... Well, it's, that's right. That's 62, this, it is 108 lots. I, forgive me, that's correct. They're doing one section, that's 62 lots, but they, that development did require turn lanes, so Doug corrected me on that one. But yeah, this is something, we're, we're still looking at it. You know, we've got to go through the construction plan phase, we've got to go through TDOT approval phase, so there's, there's still a lot of hoops. But, you know, like I was, I was saying earlier, this is right on the edge, right on the edge.
What you're looking at there, if you'll take the corner of this development's lot, go west and south of Franklin Road there, that's District 8. That's my district as county commissioner. And Reed Trail, no, that's none of my kinfolk's. I'll tell you that right here, but, but what you're seeing, some of the traffic that does come up Coleman, and I think that's what our commissioner right there is talking about, it's coming out of this area over here that's bypassing Rockvale traffic. Some of that's coming through there now. And believe it or not, they cut that far back to come and miss some of that.
I go through there all the time, just for that very reason. I don't want to come down 99 in the school zone, so I'll either come down Coleman Hill Road or go down Kingwood Road, just for the ease of getting out.
That's where some of that is, and that's where some of that comes through there. Other questions?
Mr. Chair, I kind of have a comment here, kind of addressing what Mr. Thompson was talking about, and just based on my observation of what they're doing with Highway 96 between Triune and Franklin, much of that is straightening the road, and they've sometimes gone pretty far out of their boundaries. And I see this little crook here in front of Lot 1 at the entrance to this subdivision. And I would be of the mindset that they would most likely take out that crook and move that, move that bend further to the north, which would make any type of turn lane that you built there just pretty much have to be torn out to accommodate the, the shifting of that road in the right-of-way. But that's just an opinion, you know?
So how do we, how do we word the turn lane issue, TBD, to be determined? I mean, how can we, how can we let this project move on, but yet word it such that turn lanes to be determined?
Leave it to TDOT, because we have to go to TDOT.
Okay. All right.
And staff, because we'll, we're going to still digest this. There's a lot to look at this, so we, you know, we'll have a lot of discussions with TDOT and the design team and, and... TDOT and the design team and our staff.
All right.
We do have construction plans to look at as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you, yes, sir.
In the upper left-hand corner of this picture, there's a, right there, what is that? Is that part of the property we're talking about or is that a set out that's already being used by a utility?
That's a separate piece of property, and it is being, CUD owns that.
Okay, that brings my question then. So Coleman Hill Road cannot be changed on that side? You can't put an extra turn lane without going across the road and taking the property from somebody else?
Right, and that was, I remember having some of that discussion as far as Coleman Hill Road is concerned, yeah, or even any widening to Franklin Road or turn lanes or anything would have to deal with that piece of property, so you're right.
So, there's no turn lane available on Coleman Hill Road at this point?
Along, I mean, into the development or are you just talking on Franklin Road?
On Franklin Road.
Yes, no, you're correct. I don't believe there is one.
So if we decide five years, then we'll have to talk to the landowner on the left there and say, we need some of your land to make a turn lane.
Well, and quite frankly, whenever the state comes back with their design for this, if there's any right of way that has to be acquired on that side, on the south side of Franklin Road, I mean, that's a discussion the state will have to have with Consolidated at that point, and there may have to be some changes made to the layout of that, their design of that water. I think it's a pump station in it. Isn't that right, my pump station? Yeah.
Further questions for the applicant? For the applicant, any questions?
Can somebody summarize for me? We've talked about it. What are we going to do? What are we planning to do right now as far as turning lanes? Nothing?
Well, at this point, I think the discussion that I've heard, and I was gonna make the same suggestion that Bill had, as far as, you know, their traffic study is showing right now that it's not warranted, however, the state does have the ability to come in and look at that and say, well, actually, we do want to see some turn lanes here. I'd say leave it up to TDOT to make the final determination as to whether or not turn lanes would be required along Franklin Road at their intersection into the development.
Doug, don't we have that flexibility as well to require it?
We do have the flexibility to approve turn lanes, but that's a lot of the reason why we do require the traffic studies. You know, personally, I feel better about requiring things when they are warranted by traffic studies. So, if there seems to be some sort of flaw in the methodology of the traffic study, I'm sure that's something we can discuss with the applicant, but as of right now, from what they're showing us, you know, again, this is a smaller development. You know, in time, there are going to be road improvements along Franklin Road that may, you know, solve the issue, so that's, I think, kind of where we fall from staff's standpoint.
I'm sorry, Bill, didn't you mention something about an acceleration lane?
Acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes are not warranted. What I did say is we are gonna provide separate left turn lanes out of the development at both of our accesses.
I keep going back to what Mike is saying. We're on the borderline here, and the borderline is gonna change within the next two years, one year, five years, 10 years. And isn't it our job to look at what's in the best interest of the county five years from now, 10 years from now? And we've got the opportunity right now, I think, to require it, to say that blah, 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 you do it. I don't know how many of you have to travel Franklin Road, but if you had to do it over the last 30 years, just imagine what it's gonna be like over the next 30 years. And we've got an opportunity, I think, right now to say certain things like, don't come to us with a plan unless you have a traffic plan. And the traffic plan that we have is we're going to do this study, if we've already done the study, and let it, leave it up to the state. When, my vision is for us to make that decision, not for the state to make that decision. We're not what we were 30 years ago, and we won't be what we will be 30 years from now. So, now's the time to do it. Now's the time to put on the developer, whoever he is or she is and wherever they're from, I see they're from New York City, it looks like. To me, I want, just me, okay, not you guys, I want to see us do the right thing, not only for right now, but for what's in the best interest of all of those people along Franklin Road in the future. I want to see those turn lanes.
Where would you want them at? Mr. Commissioner, looking at the drawing, where would you say that'd be the right place to put turning lanes since he's got Franklin Road and Coleman Hill Road there, and then you got Pocket Road?
I'm not an engineer, that's his job, that's Bill's job. Once again, I can be persuaded to go another way, but we've talked about turn lanes and turn lanes. We've gone down 231 and required all of these things that's happening. This is a major, major ingress and egress to the city, to Murphysboro. And for us to not take into consideration what's gonna be happening in the future, even in a development this size, you know, it's the cost of development, and I don't want it to be a cost to the county sometime in the future. It's a cost of development, and if warrant, if what Mike is saying were borderline, I would fall on the side of future planning versus borderline right now. So, that's what I'm trying to say, and I know I'm being obstinate about it, and I apologize for that, but now's the time for us to make that decision. And I don't want to leave it up to the state. I know it's a state road, but I don't want to leave it up to the state. I want us to make that decision as to what's in the best interest of the county long term.
Chairman, if I could, we want to not correct you on a couple of things, point out a couple of things that you said that are different from what the study said. We're not across the borderline, we're not at the borderline. We get appropriate levels of service, and as you know, we grade intersections on levels of service, A, B, C, D, E, and F, and we've got all A, B, and C's. We've got one D going north, but that's acceptable going on to a public highway like we're doing. And we are taking into account the future. We are taking into account Dell Webb traffic. We are growing the traffic. We're not just saying, right now, if we put those 60 houses out there, it's gonna be these levels of service. We're saying in three years, the traffic's gonna grow. We know that, we show that in here. We also know Dell Webb's gonna be developing lots, and we've added that in here too. So, we are taking into consideration the future.
Well, Bill, I've gone down that highway, and I know where Kingwood Road is at, and when I travel down there and everybody stops and has to hit the shoulder of the road to go around because people try and turn left, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this with turning lanes pending staff's comments.
Have a motion. Have a second. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion?
I do have one more question, though. Is it possible that the state would come back and say, no, don't put turn lanes in, we have other, other things that we have in mind, and does that create a problem with this approval if the state denies turn lanes?
Well, as slow as the state moves, they could, sorry, Lee, I didn't mean to. But usually, they just work with the conditions they have in the field at the time. So, if there are turn lanes there and they come back, you know, a few years later and want to widen the road to five lanes, they will incorporate that in their design, so. But it takes a long time for funding and all that good stuff to, not just construction, but it's a lot of moving parts with widening a state route. So, I mean, it's something to consider.
Um, Secretary, call the room.
Jim Aberwater? Jeff Phillips? Mike Kush? Lee Bogel? Charlotte P. Gray Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones? Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. Moving now into Section C, submitted for final plat approval. Item one, Nature Walk subdivision, Section Four and re-subdivision of common area, Lot 50E. Section Two, reapproval of 22, 2005, 22 lots on 12.21 acres, Zone PUD, located along Franklin Road, Invest Homes LLC and Nature Walk Homeowners Association Incorporated. This is the applicant, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This plan, the preliminary plan for this section was approved by the Planning Commission back in August of 2021. The final plat was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in February of 2022, however, was not recorded, so the approval of that plat has lapsed. Nothing has changed on the plat. The plat itself is in good order. It's just a matter of they didn't record it in the time prescribed by the subdivision regulations, so they are asking for reapproval of this. Again, it's in good order, we'd recommend approval.
Good question, follow-up on that. Doug, the reapproval, does it, is it subject to new permit fee schedules or not?
Well, the reapproval, the submittal of the plat was, yes. Now, if they come in for, you know, they're building permits and things, then yes, they'll be subject to the new schedule. Now, we could not change the regulations because they were still within their vested period, but as far as the fee schedule and things, we didn't used to charge for resubmittals, we do now, just the base fee for this kind of plat. But as far as building permit fees, inspections and all that, they would be under the new fee schedule at this point.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made to approve. Have a second. Further discussion?
I just have a question. In the notes on 26, it says lots 39, 143, and 144. Need a geotechnical letter. What is that? And 41, 141 and 142 are in the flood zone.
Right. They, I believe there was an old sinkhole that was filled. I believe the compaction reports are already done. I believe it's in this area here. Yeah, right here. So, during construction, they go ahead and generate these compaction reports. They'll need those to submit to building codes for their building permits. What was the other question about?
It was just the reasoning for those lots, and how do you feel about that sinkhole?
Oh, they're closed under the direct supervision of a geotechnical engineer, so, I mean, it's, like I said, it's quite common, and the flood zone that they're talking about is a localized flood zone and all. But that was talking about. This subdivision had a hydrologic study by Jamie James several years ago, right before the 2010 flood, and the numbers that he came up with were right on it and said, hey, you need to build these houses above this elevation, and that's what we're holding to. This area, I think, had a little backwater from the Jamie James study in the sinkhole flooding areas, a little bit farther to the northwest. Oops, let me turn it on.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried, so that one is passed. Moving now to item two, Kingwood Cove, 232033, two lots on 4.13 acres, Zoned REM, located along Kingwood Lane. Mike Flowers is the applicant, includes a request for a fire hydrant waiver. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to divide two lots from an existing 10-acre tract. You can see the property there on the map that Mike has up. According to information provided by CUD, the water line along Kingwood Lane cannot support a fire hydrant. However, there is a capital improvement project underway that will increase, excuse me, the fire flow capacity in this area. Estimated completion of this improvement is summer of next year. We've seen a couple plats like this over the last year or two, but we would request that any approval on this be made, subject to no building permits being issued until the line is within 60 days of completion. We would consult with CUD on the timing of the completion of that work. They would also put a note on the plat to that effect, which I believe the plat, they already have done that. Again, this is similar to a couple of plats we approved over the last year, one on Baker Road and then one off of Parsons Road, I believe is where the other one is. Besides this issue, the only other really remaining staff comments just had to do with kind of revising a couple of notes on the plat. We've already made the surveyor aware of that and will verify that that's done prior to any recording, assuming this waiver request gets approved. So, it's kind of a temporary waiver, for lack of a better way to say it. Once the water lines and improvements have been finished, there should be adequate capacity for them to install a hydrant at that point. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Aberwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, as I recall, we have a couple of Kingwoods in the county, and I think one of the Kingwoods at one time had some water issues somewhere up and along, some flooding issues at one time that were not FEMA, but they were, I guess you'd call them local flooding issues. Is that part of this property and are we accounting for that?
Yes, sir. Where they're, this is the 2010 flood imagery. There is a large pan, what I call a pan sinkhole at the front of the property. The houses will be on this ridge in the back. What we ask them to do is that they will need to do a critical lock grading plan to raise the driveways across this sinkhole and put a equalization culvert underneath it so water can flow from one side to the other back and forth. But, yeah, it's like a couple feet that they'll have to fill the driveways. It's not that deep right here, but the houses should be high and dry.
Other questions? Comments?
Let me get this straight, Doug. You're recommending approval with the comments about the future lines going in?
Yes.
I move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Got a second? Other comments?
I have one question before we do that. I'm looking at site details that show two lots on 4.13 acres, and in the notes it said we're splitting two lots of an existing 10-acre tract. What is it? I mean, we got 10 acres, are we dealing with four acres?
Mike, can you pull the plat back up? Oh, yes, sir. The existing tract, as it sits today's 10 acres, they'll have two acre tracks in the back, and then the remaining's gonna be about six, six and a half is what you're looking at. So, it's, both of them are correct.
Are we coming back? I guess that brings more questions. Do we need to be doing four tracks here? Are we just doing two? We're gonna stop, we're gonna do some more flag lots later? We're gonna have a landlock back here in the back on the remaining?
Well, no, I mean, there's no landlock right now because both of those are flags, so they both have access, and there's nothing on there about cross-access, so I'm assuming they're both gonna have their own driveways. Now, whether or not the applicant wants to, you know, further divide the six acres, I mean, I guess that's something he might, could do. That's not something we've been discussing. Of course, he'd have to have enough soul to do that, plus looking at that aerial photo, you know, his area's gonna be limited as far as where he can actually put another house. Obviously, I don't think we'd want one in the front there just because of where the location of that sinkhole is, so, and of course, than that one right there that Mike's highlighting, so, I mean, there's already some constraints with the property.
Other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed?
No.
One no, those approved. Motion is approved. Moving to item three, Last Cassis Estates, Section One, 232047, 62 lots on approximately 46 acres, Zone PUD, located along Last Cassis Pike, State Route 96. Elmington Residential is the applicant, Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved at the Planning Commission's March 28, 2022 meeting. This final plat does appear to be consistent with that plan. We have had numerous conversations with the developer and with their surveyor on this particular plat. I think a lot of it just stemmed from the fact that they hadn't done a whole lot of work in Rutherford County, so there was a little getting used to what we wanted to see. For the most part, this plat is in good order. There are a handful of comments that do need to be addressed. Most of them I would classify as housekeeping, like for instance, they need to correct the subdivision name on the water certificate, add some blanks for the HOA and long-term maintenance agreement notes, things of that nature, but nothing, one of the most important ones. nature. But nothing, the most, one of the most important ones, also adding the fire hydrant locations prior to recording, that's standard. Sometimes plats don't have that on there quite yet, but we always make sure they do before recording. But again, these are issues that we will make sure are resolved prior to us signing the plat for recording. So, Mike, I don't know if you had any other further comments on this, but other than those comments, we'd recommend approval.
Comments or questions for staff? Not, do we have a motion or?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the staff comments.
To approve. Have a second. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it is approved. Item four, Scott and Rose Walker, 23, 2063, four lots on 31.84 acres, zoned RL, located along Horton Highway. Scott and Rose Walker are the applicants and request for a fire hydrant waiver. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to split this tract, or yes, distract it into four separate tracks, all of which would exceed five acres. Three of them will have access to a 50-foot access easement. You can see there's an existing house along the frontage of Horton Highway. This is, would be on lot nine. The applicant is requesting a fire hydrant waiver as the line in this area cannot support a hydrant. Most of our other comments have been addressed. Our fire marshal did ask for, one of these comments was the need to provide a fire apparatus turnaround at the dead end of Walter Way. I mean, that's something I think that they can accommodate, you know, just as a subject to a staff comment kind of a thing. You can kind of see what they're doing back in that area there. So with that, like I said, the biggest issue with this remaining is the fire hydrant waiver. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions?
Mike, Doug, do these lots have their own septic system permits?
They'll all have their, yes, they'll all have their own septic. This is not like a step system. They'll have their own individual septic, conventional septic tanks.
Doug, you mentioned the fire hydrant waiver. There's four lot, there's four lots, correct?
Total, yes. There's the existing house on lot, would that be lot nine? And then 10, 11 and 12 are new lots.
But would we require the sprinkling system?
Not for this. They would have to be five, six lots or greater based on the changes we made.
Your recommendation, staff's recommendation?
Beyond the fire hydrant waiver, everything else meets our regulations. So, I mean, we're fine with it. Based on today's regulations at least.
Best I remember, we lost a house there on Horton Highway or on 41 there because we didn't have adequate fire protection in the last 12 months. And that, that does bother me whether we're gonna keep, saying we're gonna waiver, you know, from a safety of the citizens out here, if we're gonna just keep waiving fire hydrant requirements when I know we had a fire on 41 there. You don't have the water. There's not water there.
There's no water down there.
No.
Not water to support. We always have to haul water to that area. That's why we have the tanker systems. I'd say the location of that one, and Mr. Thompson may correct me, a lot of times where that one's located, we'd probably be calling in Chapel Hill and probably Williamson County to help us. But that one would probably be supported through Igble. Am I not right?
I'd say that's right.
Well, there's Rockville Station would probably come in on this.
And again, I know we're in rural America and we got standards we're building around. Don't want to go in this thing blind that if they have a fire there that we're making a waiver, they know we're going in, that there's not gonna be fire protection adequate. There's gonna be a tanker truck to get there. It's gonna take some pumbers to, to put out whatever catches on fire there.
We have our fire marshal, he might can, or did he just leave? This is fairly well, well-known. I missed, I missed the comment about the sprinkler systems. Are they required?
Not for this size of development, no, sir. It had to be six lots or greater before that would kick in.
Could we ask for them?
I think you could suggest that, you know, this might be something to look into. I don't think you can require it based on our regulations. You gotta remember, we changed that earlier this year, if I remember right. It used to be three lots or above, and based on some of the changes we made for fire hydrant spacings and everything, we upped that just a little bit. So I don't think you could go back and say, well, we want to see them in this, even if it doesn't meet that lot threshold anymore. And the applicant, I mean, whoever builds the houses, they're free to do that. I mean, we're certainly not gonna prohibit them from doing that. I just don't think we can require it.
Yeah. And Tanya might have some input in this, but I believe that they're building very large, beautiful homes. These are up on a hillside overlooking Williamson County. So I, you know, I would say they're probably wanting to be protected anyway. But that's just my thought.
Well, Mr. Chair, seeing as it meets our regulations, other than the fact that we can't, or that there's not a fire hydrant available to meet the minimum requirements for a fire hydrant, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have the second for discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
And one no. It is approved. Moving to item eight, staff reports to another business. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, we have gotten concrete dates on all of the community outreach meetings for Plan Rutherford. I'll be sending you an email to that effect. We did post some of that information on the county's website just late last week, but I'll be sure to send that to you all. We'll be having one at Plainview Elementary. We'll be having one at Rockville High School, one at Lascasis Elementary, and then one at the Smyrna Event Center. That one's actually next week on Wednesday. I don't remember the other ones, but I'll make sure you get that information. So I'll hope to see, if not all, at least most of you there, at, at least one of these meetings. So that's pretty much all I had.
Right. Just a reminder that our next Planning Commission meeting will be on October the 9th, here in this very room at 6 o'clock PM. Any, not any, okay, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to address the committee and staff with a question, a comment and a suggestion. The, the black box that we have talked about today is traffic studies. Several of us have been on this commission for a long time, and I'll be the first to admit that I know enough about traffic studies to be dangerous. And there's a lot I do not know about traffic studies. So let me, let me propose this question to staff and, and really to Mike, because Mike, in his previous life, worked for a private design firm who I assume contracted out for traffic studies. So, so, and Lee, I don't know if you in your world, okay, so let me ask this question, because I do not know the answer, so I'm gonna ask this question. When, when a design firm, like the ones that we deal with, goes out and hires a traffic engineer to do a traffic study, when those findings are done, they go back to the civil engineering firm for review, right? And I'm assuming, I'm assuming, dangerous, I know, I'm assuming that the civil engineer and then the traffic engineer can review that data and decide what they want to report to the county, or maybe massage the numbers, or, you know, they have last look before they turn over the evidence to us. Am I off on that assumption, Michael?
But Bill performed the traffic study for the Ashmore one, so he performed it in-house. Some of them do perform them in-house. I think SEC now has a traffic engineer that does their own as well.
Okay. Well, I'm, and I'm not picking on Bill. I'm, this is a general broad brush kind of a question. Because I don't know if SEC, you say they do their own in-house or do they?
They do, they have the ability now. Yes, sir.
Okay. So they have a traffic engineer on staff. Okay. I guess where my concern was, that we, we, as the Planning Commission, perhaps look at a redacted, maybe too strong of a word, but a massaged traffic study. And so my thought was, why don't we, why don't we pick for traffic engineers that we trust, that know what we want, and lay out what our expectations are for a traffic study? And a consulting engineer has to hire one of those four, and the report comes to the engineer and us at the same time, and we both review.
Right.
So there is no opportunity to massage or, or, or change numbers. See what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So it's a fair, both, both owners and, and?
That's essentially what Williamson County does now. They, they have a requirement that they, you hire a third-party consultant.
Yeah.
That's approved through Williamson County, and that's how it's done, instead of doing them in-house or whatnot, so.
You know, they'll trust but verify.
Or they'll have their own third-party traffic engineer confirm the number. So, you know, I think it was Mark Twain that says, there are lies, there are damn lies, and there are statistics.
Yeah.
You can, you can manipulate the numbers very easily. And I, you know, as a design engineer, it's easy to manipulate numbers. So that's why we have to really, really, really study these and give a lot of time and attention to these.
Yeah. That's why I think, ultimately in my head, I think it'd be more beneficial if an, a traffic engineer laid down the report in front of us as the owner and the developer, designer at the same time and said, look, fellas, love it or hate it, this is what we got. This is what the expectations are.
Yes, sir.
So, Lee, I see you've got the mic ready.
Well, I've authored several traffic studies over the years in my consulting, and that was, there, there are assumptions made, there's guidelines, there's what's called trip generation based on the type of facility.
Yeah.
And it helps you with equations that come up with the volume of traffic projected for that facility. And then you add on the percentages for the future. And then the hard part is the distribution of those numbers. That's where there's a lot of assumptions made. There's looking at the local traffic. They're looking at the general area. But as far as the reports that I've written and most of the people that I know, once that report's written, that is it. It's not changed. It's not modified. It's not, all the ones I did, it was part of the integrity of the job, much like a geotechnical report or anything else. You're putting your name and your stamp on it, which I have a lot of those stamped out there and, and all over Tennessee and a few other states. And so, just to keep that integrity of the position. But there are a lot of assumptions made because it is almost like stormwater and some of those. There's, there's assumptions made that, based off engineering and, and local area and some other things that all come together. Not to say that someone might find a different opinion, but you're making the best assumptions that you can to move forward with your, your conclusions. And so having a third party's not a bad idea, but I want to stand up for the integrity of the reports as we receive those.
Oh, yes.
That all the engineer firms that we get those from, I, I would stand behind their assumptions 100%.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we could all make different assumptions on those. And sometimes the level of the facility and then other facilities that come in, I mean, those, those are things that are influenced and it is kind of, I'd say kind of a voodoo to it. I mean, it's a little bit of, here's my assumptions. But as long as you're clear on what your assumptions are.
You're making your best engineering judgment.
That's right.
Well, okay, so let me ask this question then. Do we, and, and Michael, this is to you mainly too, do we clearly, are, are we hurting ourselves or helping ourselves by giving the proper endpoints and starting points of a traffic study? Do, should we, should we be kicking that boundary out a little farther to the nearest biggest intersection? You know?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know what your rule of thumb is when you ask for a traffic study. You know, I don't know if it's four blocks away from the property line of a subdivision. I don't know if it's a half a mile. I don't know what your standards are. So.
Right. We, we have a scoping meeting before the traffic studies performed, before the counts are made or whatnot. So we look at what road network the proposed, the development will be on, and we take that out to the next major arterial each direction. If it's, you know, we, we try to scope it. Well, if we can get traffic to a major arterial to a major arterial, we, we've done a good study and that's enough to disperse the traffic. So the Ashmore one, it's, it's already on a major arterial, you know, that's, so it, we scoped it out as far as we thought that all the, the traffic flows would impact.
Yeah.
And that's what I would say as well, is, is working from the arterial that would take on that volume back through the collector. There's, those functional classifications that Bill talked about.
Right.
It's classifications of roadway that would be the arterial, then a collector which collects from all the subdivisions and then down to the local road. So you work that direction to get them to the arterial.
Right.
All right.
It's like your, your, your veins and your arteries in your body, you know?
Yeah.
You take it out to the major ones.
So the T, so the one we looked at today with the 63 lots, I think unless they've changed it, TDOT's rule is 70, so I don't expect them to say it's gonna require a turn lane. But what I, what I was curious about was phasing, and I did, probably should have mentioned it, phasing in that one. And then also, if they're, if that 96 widening gets let within that three-year time, I'm okay with foregoing the turn lanes. There's no sense in building them to be torn out. But if it's not, we don't want to turn into a situation where it's five, seven, 10 years down the road. But I think you're gonna see a lot of movement beginning of the year based on the funding and some other things. So things can change really quickly.
All right. This, this, this discussion helps me a lot. So for, for, for folks like Jeff and I, when, when Mike says earlier today that, oh man, this is kind of borderline, we're getting close, it doesn't mean that Jeff and I are sitting back and saying, man, if we would just go one more city block on our traffic study, that would kick it over into, that, you, you've got all the, you've already looked at all that, you're good.
Yes, sir. Right.
Okay.
But, yes, sir. The, the turning movements, the impacts are right there at the development. That's, that's where the, the turn lanes are needed, right there at, at Puckett, you know, because you've got opposing left turns, people turning left on Puckett and people wanting to turn left on, on, into the development.
But is it, are they, are they so, I guess this is where I'm trying to wrap my hands around. Are they so close that $1 General were screw it up or one?
No, sir.
Home Depot would screw it up?
No, sir. It's, like Lee said, it's the distribution, you know?
Okay.
And, and their study, they said that 40% of the traffic's gonna go west to get on 840. 30% is gonna go east towards City of Murfreesboro.
Yeah.
You know, if you, you swap that.
Yeah, those are assumptions. I mean, that's.
Yeah. Your assumption swaps that, that you, you could be enough to, to say, oh, no, that's, that's gonna be enough turning, left turn movements into this development to, to kick in a turn lane.
And that's why I supported that turn lane, that we required that, because those percentages were so close that it could flip-flop either way. Plus, we have those other developments in the area that if, if the widening doesn't occur in the next three years when that's finished, then it's, it's, to me, it'll be warranted. I mean, it will be.
Okay. Then, and I'm sorry, everybody. So from a legal standpoint, I'm, I'm gonna look at our county engineer, from a legal standpoint, and I'm gonna take today's example just as an example because it's fresh in our mind. We all voted on Mr. Huddleston's project that we wanted turn lanes. We can do that, right? Even, even if a traffic study eh, but we, I guess in court, we could say, well, Mr. Engineer or Mr. Traffic Engineer, your assumptions were this, but if you increased this by 4%, this could have kicked you over the line. So, I mean, we, we could win in court, right? Because Lee's just told us that there are a lot of assumptions to be made. Yeah. So, right, I mean, by, by asking Bill to do these extra turn lanes, nobody could come back and say, well, you guys are crazy. The report says you don't need them. We're gonna sue you because you're making us do something we don't need to do.
And, and their experience and assumptions when they develop those traffic studies, I, I agree with their assumptions. I mean, it's, it's, they had their deep into that experience. And even when I first started out, there was enough people checking. experience. And even when I first started out, there was enough people checking those to make sure those assumptions were for those areas and looking at the right things. There's a lot of thought put into that, not just, oh, I assume it's going to be 40% this way, 30% that way. There's, there's a whole lot of gnashing of teeth and tearing up of paper and penciling and trying to work things out to make sure you're doing the best evaluation that you can.
Okay. So engineers are conservative by nature, Lee, right? So is that conservatism helping, from a planning standpoint, from Jeff's concern, is that conservatism helping our cause in terms of, do we go ahead and, if, if the study says, eh, you really don't need it, but you're close, does that help Jeff's cause, or does that hinder Jeff's cause?
Well, one thing that helps ours is the other developments coming in around. We've seen a lot of development in that area. We could say it's going to continue to grow so that we can hang our hat on that.
Yeah.
In my opinion. That's where I, on that borderline, that's where I decided to vote yes, because I'm like, well, it is sort of borderline, but with everything else coming in, it's going to compound quickly.
It'll trigger. Okay.
I'd like to add to that. I think Mike's right on something. When I was in the mechanical business, when we would install ductwork, one of the requirements today is you have to have the ductwork tested, and you didn't do it yourself. You got companies disqualified to do it, but they wouldn't allow you to test your own ductwork. Fox Guard in-house. So we would have to hire a third-party company to come out and test the ductwork and sign off on it. And I think what Mike's saying, it makes sense to do this. The other piece that I think's important is what we have in this room. I can tell you, we need a turn lane out there. I know it for a fact. I couldn't care less what the study says. I drive the highway. The Pitts project last month or the last time we met in here, I know the traffic out there. I know what's going to happen on Last Cassus Highway, because I've driven that highway and seen it backs all the way up to Last Cassus. That's, I think, what we're in here about. As citizens, we know more about this than the engineer study's going to show if we drive that road every day. Okay? One other caveat to this on design and engineering. I live, I've got a business that's one, at one of the most dangerous intersections in this county. You'll read about, another wreck at Thompson Stores, another wreck at Thompson Stores. We got a light in the process of being put up. I've been at this site right at 20 years. Every wreck, I can show you which side of the four corners of the intersections that the cars have went off the road. No engineer come to talk to me about putting the poles up. Poles got core drilled, they're up. The two poles that went up, there has never been a vehicle on the opposite corners. In other words, these poles are right in the traffic line of fire whenever we have a wreck there. So these poles are going to get hit. As a matter of fact, where one of the poles is at, we've had a wreck while they're in the process of construction, and they missed the bolt pattern about two feet. We know. As citizens, we can see it. And I'll go ahead and go on record, that's, we're surprised to get the light, but where the poles are at, these poles are going to get clipped on a regular basis. No, no doubt about it. So I, I believe, Mike, I think it's the idea that if there's a way that we make sure that no engineering firm, and I get the integrity and they, they're stamped, they're professionals, but I, I do, I'm familiar enough with, but I manipulate numbers to kind of work anyway. But if I'm telling you, if you go down 986 and you get caught in that traffic on Kingwood Lane, folks just trying to go left, and you're trying to get to Tryon, you're going to be there a while. Because there's so much incoming traffic, it gets caught at the Veterans Parkway lot. So anyhow, I like the idea of some way of getting a third-party firm, four of them, and they select from, and we get a little education about this traffic flow.
And that, and that's where that experience comes into play over the years of working in an area that, like you said, the local firms and, and things of that nature. But that's, there's nothing that substitutes for person living in that area experiencing that, whatever's going on with traffic or water. We deal with that all the time. And it, and it's, and it's always, we always hear it here at public hearings, traffic and water, traffic and water. And everyone, I've always said, I may be a classically-trained traffic engineer, but everyone is a traffic engineer because they experience it every day. And we have to take that into account. And that, and that does help in that planning and that, overall, it's a key piece to go along with the traffic study. We're seeing what the numbers tell us. Well, let's put it together with what people are experiencing. And I think we'll have a good outcome if we do that.
Okay. I was, I was going to say, I think we've chased this raccoon, but I don't think we've treed yet. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one comment, I probably said way too much today, but the development that we were talking about, Ashmore, it's sitting right on what I consider a major ingress and egress to the center of our county, which is Murfreesboro. And a lot of commercial development is happening in the county, unincorporated versus the incorporated areas now. This piece of property begs, in my mind, for commercial development instead of residential development. And, and we're building houses on it. But what if a developer would have came in and said, "I want this commercial"? We would not have questioned turning lanes. And I doubt seriously that a commercial development would add more traffic than that residential development. That's the process that's running through my mind right now. This piece of property, if it were zoned something else, we would have required turning lanes without any question. Probably with less traffic. And, and those type of thoughts, as, as I'm looking somewhere in the future versus what we've been doing in the past, it's, it has to be the cost of development for the county and not continue us hearing all the complaints month after month after month after month about traffic. What are you guys doing about traffic? We have an opportunity to do something about traffic. And that's the point that I was trying to make. Whether it's, it's the absolute correct thing to do according to statistics, I just am trying my best to figure out what is the best interest of Rutherford Countians as we continue to go future, to the future. And, and once again, as we begin to continue to develop commercially, these pieces of property are disappearing. And we're putting houses on it instead of ingress and egress that could handle commercial development. Those are the type of things that long-term land use planning can hopefully help as we get into the future. So it, it's, it's not that I considered myself right, but I just think that it was the right thing to do, whether it's legally the most correct thing to do. And, and I applaud what Mike has brought up there, because my understanding was even less than his. And, and I've probably been on this commission a, a lot longer than anybody else has. I'm not sure if anybody else approaches 30 years, but I've been on this commission for 30 years and have seen where we were, seen where we are. And I'm concerned about where we're going. And that's the reason that comprehensive plan and us looking at the future, every decision we make has to be part of that. So we need to look forward and don't need to look back. And, and we don't need to be afraid either. There's a lot of folks that are coming into this county, investing in Rutherford County, that I'm not sure that they've got the long-term best interest of the county at heart. I'm not sure that they do. I know that there's some developers that, that do. And that's the cost of development. It is the cost of development. And as we go into the future, we just need to consider those type of things. Doug and his staff has just done a wonderful job in, in trying to lead us into the future. And I have all the confidence in the world that this time next year, our comprehensive plan will be in place and will be better because of that. But these type of decisions we'll continue to have to make, probably on an individual basis as we continue to go. So we're looking at, at roads and how do we answer some of those problems that people bring to us every month? Traffic, traffic, traffic. When, when they talk about certain things, they talk about traffic, traffic, traffic. So we just need to ask those questions all the time and do what we think is in the best interest of the county long term.
And that's the fun and the stressful part from my side, is, is having conducted those, developed those plans and those recommendations before, but trying to incorporate that real life, what's going on in that area. So that's where I sit here and try to wrestle through that. And I don't think that's going to end anytime soon. But it does make it stressful and rewarding when you get it right. But we, we're trying to get it right.
I applaud this commission. I do. The concern that all of us have, all of us have, is, is the right concern. So I think we're really going in the, in the right direction. And Mr. Chairman, you've been on this commission long enough to also know that questions, whether or not they're considered good questions or not dumb questions. So just like the point that Mike brought up, it, it, those kind of things need to be repeated over and over again. We all learn from those things.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate you being here today. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.